He does that.
We're set, okay.
Yep, all right, seven o'clock, call this meeting in order if everybody can rise for the demication and pledge allegiance.
Goodness, Father, Lord, I just thank you for this day. I thank you for the ability that we can come here in public, discuss the business of our county and make it the best county that we can be. Father, just grant safety as we leave this place this evening and just give us all positive attitudes here this evening in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item one, we'll skip, nobody signed up. Move down to item two, approval of the minutes from the October thirteenth meeting.
John, motion approved.
Motion by John, second by Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item three, apparently nobody applied for Pita Boa and there was some confusion on, even though it was posted properly, there was some confusion as to where to find that to apply, so we're gonna table that. Hopefully people that are listening in will, if interested, will apply for those two positions. We will table that to the December meeting. So we'll move down to item four, which is adoption of the twenty twenty-six salary ordinance. Everybody should have a copy of that. And this is everything except for community corrections, is that correct?
Yes.
That will be done in December as they firm up their budget. And this does match what was in the budget that was approved in October.
Say, we've seen all of this before, right?
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve the salary ordinance.
Motion by Terry.
Second, Brian.
Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
She's on it.
Huh? Ready?
I'm pissed, I'm not going to need the controller for Solid Waste District. I'm here to request the transfer appropriation from item zero one fifteen, which is part-time, to pension of zero one two two for six thousand. Education, two thousand dollars to general supplies.
Two hundred?
Two thousand. I have increased up to two thousand because of a bill we received after I gave the initial request.
Okay, so that's a change, okay.
Okay, legal services and subs and dues is a thousand and eleven hundred into trash fees for twenty-one hundred. Maintenance building, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars to workers' comp insurance. And then our recycling program, two thousand dollars to equipment repair. And our board has approved these transfers, so we have changed council, council's blessing on that.
I will make the motion. Is that set?
Second.
Brian, Jamie?
Second.
Jamie is second.
Jamie?
Jamie did, yep. Turn them things up, yeah. Turn up your hearing. All those in favor? All those in favor, all right. All right.
And I'm on for the next one. I advertised for fifty thousand dollar additional appropriation for our Cazorvis Waste Program. We give the recycling to, we have paint and TVs and electronic recycling and those we budget. We budgeted fifty-five thousand and we're already thirty-eight thousand in the hold. And I know that he has another group of things to send out, Scott does. So anything after this additional to get us out of the red will be pushed to January. And so I think we started out like January last year, or this year is thirty-one thousand right off the bat for a bill, so.
So will you encumber whatever's left in that account to help next year's budget then, if you have anything left?
Yes, but I don't think we will have anything left because, well, yes, I see what you're saying. So because I.
If you know you've got a bill coming.
Forty or thirty, yeah. So if I have twenty-two thousand.
Knowing you've got expenses.
We have a bill, or I'll try to get it paid, but in December.
Okay. So we're spending a hundred and.
Hundred thousand on recycling.
Recycling, I guess that's a good thing, people are using it.
Yeah, yes.
Instead of throwing it out in the.
In the ditch, yeah. Which they're still doing that too, I believe. You'd be asking Commissioner Stall.
There's stiff fines coming for that, I would tell you that.
Yeah, so.
Sitting on Solid Waste, we have very consistent numbers month after month, and I think there's so much more increased traffic than it was now that it's established. So, yeah, whether, I know it's expensive, but there's not as much.
It's a service to the community so that they're not dumping it in the ditches, so.
Right.
Yep, okay. Is that a motion, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, second by Keith. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Jerry?
I am here to, I'm Jeremy Han, County Surveyor. I'm here to ask for a transfer in drainage board budget of four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in front of education material and programs to legal services. I have been blessed with a technical savvy deputy, so she picks up on things very well. And we've got some legal services from an issue that arose in twenty eighteen that we are trying to rectify. And so it's an ongoing legal issue. And when I put in for the transfer, I didn't have the rest of the bills. So just so you guys know, in December, I'm gonna come back and try to move some other, it's all money that was previously appropriated to the drainage board. All I'm doing is moving them around into legal services. So just so you're aware of that for next month. I didn't get those numbers until after, the agenda was already set up for this one.
Motion approved, John.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What was that, what was that number next month, about forty-five hundred bucks you said?
Well, right now, right now that I know about is about two thousand, and I've got like four thousand I'm gonna move around because I don't think it's over.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that that's enough to cover it. If not, it's gonna carry into next year anyhow.
Yeah, okay.
But that should be enough to at least close out the year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Terry.
My turn?
Your turn.
Oh, I don't remember what I was supposed to do. So, I think it's done with that. Option one, no, it's not. Yeah, for community hand activity. I'm just requesting a transfer over the, to cover up some shortage of funds. So I'm requesting to move from computer supplies to operating supplies within the same fund transfer, forty-five hundred hours. In the same from software computer to hardware computer and education training to equipment leasing. That's forty-five hundred from computer supplies to operating supplies, ten thousand dollars from software computer to hardware computer, eight thousand dollars from education training to equipment leasing.
That gets you a hole by the end of the year.
That should get me out of the hole, which I might have to do nothing.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
Motion.
Jamie, second by John. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Soil and water.
She's not here.
Not here.
This is just a basic, you increased her wages earlier in the year.
Oh, okay.
And this is just to make sure, yeah, that everything is covered. So this includes the county share of her wage increase and then the reflective retirement and social security.
Motion to approve.
Brian, second by Keith. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Brenda here? I don't see her, I don't see her.
No, she might be working on settlement. I'll just do hers as well.
Yeah.
Hundred and sixteen dollars. She's moving from office equipment into her deputy line. I believe this had to do with a shortage with the increase that was not in her original budget at the beginning of the year, but.
I think she did alert us of that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, I think I.
Bridge is awful, Ruthie. I'll make that motion.
Terry, second by Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I failed to mention Shane's on vacation. I remembered as I looked down for him. He did tell me. Hi Sheriff, did you leave your guard duty?
Yes.
As a matter of fact.
Sorry, that was funny. We won't go there.
We already did.
Hi Sheriff.
Hi. I've got three things. The first one is I want to move some money from my operating supplies into my uniform and clothing and also in repair and maintenance. Fifty-five hundred from the uniform and clothing is for the jail officers. It's a revolving door. I mean, I can put off for a year to give them a uniform, give them a uniform in that year, two months, that's when they leave. So I don't know, I don't know of a better fix for it. Delay giving uniforms and it just doesn't matter. So that's what that is for. Then the other one is for repair and maintenance. I got two things. One's for the grease trap that needs to be cleaned out. We try to do that every year, but depending on the amount of grease, sometimes happens twice a year. Then the other one's for garage door services. We had to repair that off all our garage doors that got stuck. Any questions on that?
We can do them together, so if you wanna go ahead and move on to that if there's any questions.
The other one, I'm moving money out of special deputy line item into the jails. And you see the breakdown there. That was done for, we had special deputies, large turnover, so we had to hire new. But until they got through training, before we did everything, they were being paid out of the jailer line item. So now that they're trained, you just need to move that money from the specialty deputy line item and back into the jail.
Motion approved. Second.
Brian, second. Terry made the motion for the two transfers. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Last one's out of the list. This is for elected official. So this has to do with my pay. As you know, my pay is based off a percentage of prosecutors. I believe prosecutor got his pay or there was some change in that percentage there. I think in April, it was voted on by the county commissioners for that update, and then the contract was done in May. Is that correct?
That sounds about right.
Done in May for everybody that signed. So that's just to get that pay up to where it should be.
Okay. Keith?
Second.
Second by Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Going back to work?
I'm gonna go back to work.
Thanks, Sheriff.
We already covered you, Brenda, if you wanna.
Sorry, I was on base.
It's okay.
You're fine, you're fine. It was easy stuff, easy stuff. You're good. If you wanna go back to doing your stuff, you're good.
I guess I'm here to move some, move some money as well. We worked about, we were three dispatchers short for about four months, four and a half months this beginning of this year, which I don't have a lot left in that, in that line item. And, but also we use a lot of our part-time dollars and overtime dollars. And so I'm asking to move thirty thousand dollars from the dispatcher line item and use it for twelve thousand of that for part-time. Help six thousand for over, for the supervisor line, which was part of the job class approved raise we got in April, March. And twelve point five, the overtime line, that'd be a total of thirty thousand for that from that particular request. For the second one, item fourteen, can I do both these together?
No. No, because they're two different funds, so.
Any questions on that one? If not, all entertained.
Motion. Jamie, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Now, on the twelve twenty-two fund, the nine-one-one fund, I have a question to move some of the service contracts. The reason they're separate here is because they were. The utilities one was came out a little bit later, so the service contract, twelve thousand from that line and use it to pay our utility at Victory Hall. The other one is thirteen three, and that is to cover the, again, the raise for the old, myself, the position director from the, the job class approval in March, or the fall. And then the sixty-two hundred is for a rental equipment fee that we had for when they repaired the generator out at Victory Hall, we had a generator, and so we rented one for, I don't know, a month and a half, maybe?
Six, seven weeks?
Yeah. And I did not have any, I did not have a line item for rental equipment. I could have used, so I did, I initially tried to give it out of equipment and Jill might have told me that that's not something we can do since we have a rental equipment line to use, so we recreated one and then funded that.
Okay.
So that covers the bills for twenty-four five.
Since it was for a service that had to be out of the three series, if it was equipment that we were gonna fit into our inventory, it would have been paid out of the four series, so that's why.
Makes sense, yep. Okay, entertain a motion for those two.
Second.
Jamie, second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The, I forgot one other thing, though, that just come up and I'd like to.
Yeah, you gotta share that with everybody, so.
I did something that I can, I can understand better, but I also have yours too. Kendall, let Jamie explain that a bit better.
I did mine in Excel, he did his in Word.
So I have been working with Kendall to make sure I understood the best way to.
You didn't, you didn't give everybody the Excel? I didn't bring it?
I have the copy.
I did bring, oh yeah, I got copies. I'm gonna get you, oh, for Shane.
I'll make sure he gets it, thank you.
Kendall?
And so, and this is one, Kendall, when I started doing it, I was just having a tough time making sure that I was saying it the right way. So of course, I said, hey, here's the numbers. Could you, could you come up with your, your deal? And I did.
And so, once again, I'll allow him to, to give you guys the good word.
Thank you.
So it's been something that we've been working on since about April of this year. We found out that at our Motorola summit, that Motorola was gonna sunset the Call Works phone system. And essentially that meant that they were no longer an upgraded, updated product. We still have three years left on our lease agreement with them because it's part of the lease agreement we have for both the radio and the phone system. It, we were, there were several directors that were affected by this, several different piece apps. We approached Motorola about the fact that we still have three years left, good faith of using the Call Works product. It's no longer gonna be serviced like it needed to be. We've already started to see issues with it, to be honest with you. And the tech service for it is not consistent or available. I was told they have a couple of techs in Indiana that can handle Call Works stuff. But that's not enough for the type of work that we typically need done, and without updates, it really does hamper the work we do. So Motorola actually did the right thing. They offered a significant discount on their Vesta nine-one-one phone system, which is truthfully considered the best one in the world. We did not buy that back in twenty eighteen because it was about twice the price of Call Works. And it made all the sense in the world not to, not to invest in it at that time. At this time, though, with the discounted rate, the cost that we've gotten, the purchase price for the Vesta nine-one-one system is two hundred ninety-two thousand and some change. It is, again, that is about, honestly, about a third of the price of what it is normally. They understood that they were put in a sort of bad spot by sunsetting this thing a few years earlier than we had ever wanted to. And so I put together just a little bit of a cost comparison as to what we have now compared to what this is. For the sake of comparison, I broke it down into yearly costs, even though the plan is to ask you guys to approve appropriating two hundred, that two hundred ninety-two, one fifty-three, thirty-two into the equipment line, forty-four, one hundred, in the twelve twenty-two. I met with the commissioners this morning, presented them, and approved using that fund to pay for this. We are in year seven of ten, agreeing with Motorola for the Call Works phone system. Currently, every year we pay fifty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for that product. And if you break it down and compare the bestest cost, it would be forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, sixty-six cents. Maintenance fees for the best system is going to be, they're discounting that as well, it is only fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. We currently pay twenty-one thousand dollars a year for our Call Works maintenance. So comparatively, it's about eighteen thousand dollars over the next three years. I wanna make it clear, and when our contract is gonna be up, about ten years is up, we were going to have to make a decision, is what we were gonna do. And there was gonna be some sort of investment at that time, likely would have been with Vesta. We didn't know that at the time, obviously, when we signed the agreement back in twenty-one teen. But that is, I think, the reality is where we're at right now. And so I can't guess what the final two years, the last two years would have been, if we're comparing five by five, because the Vesta contracts is for five years. And so it's gonna stretch us a little past what we would have had with Call Works. But I can tell you that the system we're getting is, is literally the system that's known all over the world as the one that you should want or not. If you can afford it. And it is not always affordable for smaller communities and smaller piece apps. They have done, like I said, they've done the right thing here and made it affordable for us, affordable being almost three hundred thousand dollars. But broke down, you can see that the cost comparison is actually a little bit less than what we're currently paying. Kendall, in the other spreadsheet, maybe you can explain a little bit.
Yeah, so what I did was I said, okay, the line item for equipment leases is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. You take off the Call Works of the fifty-five, six eighty-two, so that, that line item's gonna be basically ninety-nine, eight oh three, eighty-one instead of the one fifty-five. So what I did was a five-year cash flow. So you show the two ninety-two on the upfront, you take out what you're not gonna pay, which is the fifty-eight, four thirty, sixty-six each year because you already paid it. You're also not gonna pay the fifty-five, six eighty-two. The reason I got a question mark there was when I sent it back to Tim, I wasn't sure if the twenty-one, oh ninety-two went away, and it does. So if you take the twenty-seven, forty-eight, and the twenty-one, oh ninety-two, you get that eighteen, three forty-three, thirty-four savings that he's referenced here over the next three years. And then I allocated out the next years, four and five, just assuming the same costs. So really, over the life of it, we're gonna save significant money, have a much superior system. He did bring in one of their, was he a tech or a sale, he wasn't really a sales guy.
No.
Because he was not very good at spelling. But he was very sharp, he really understood the system. Very sharp, he just was definitely not a guy that liked crowds.
And he wasn't the guy that's supposed to come. Took my board meeting last, two months ago, two months ago, and so when he showed up, he's like, he had her minutes before.
Yeah. Yeah. But he was very, he was extremely knowledgeable, which was important, obviously, to our group, so.
He was sweating hair and mace.
Yeah.
So this is for five years?
Five years.
This will be for five.
Yeah, so we won't pay, years one through five, that forty-three and the fourteen-seven, we won't pay any of that. We will only pay the, for the seventy-five hundred radios, we're gonna, you're gonna see a line item of ninety-nine, eight oh three, all the way through. Instead of the, except for year one, where you're gonna see four hundred thousand.
Well, and once the lease agreement is up in three years, the radio system will be something that Motorola is always talking about. Whether that next-gen stuff is ready to go or not, interesting, ARPU radio is fantastic. I mean, Motorola just, it does very tough radios, and they come from that. What I will also want to let you know is, the, they've been, they're allowing Indigital, which is a local company or a district, regional company that actually has offices in Portland to be an ARPU provider. So their technicians, their ability to service us is gonna improve our, us, it's gonna help us immensely because they're twenty minutes away, twenty-five minutes away. They, they aren't as big as Motorola, so they don't necessarily hit it quite as hard when it's time to, to make a, a, a offer like this. I, I don't offer credit to the big companies before their generosity, but in this case Motorola's been a really good partner here. They could have just said, hey.
Sorry.
Whatever, it's too bad. But they didn't. And it's, and also just to be clear, the nine-one-one fund is currently very healthy right now. Kendall and I, and the commissioner, I know, worked really hard to try to balance some spending between the two funds that we used to make sure that it wasn't empty. And I also just, just to be clear, this is a, this is a piece of proprietary equipment, so it is not, a lot of it requires us to get bids or competitive bids because nobody else offers this product. And so this is a big deal.
What caught my ear this morning was you said there's some of the bigger cities using this, Chicago and.
Yeah, New York City, Indianapolis, Chicago.
That's, that's impressive, if they can use that with that many people, I mean.
Yeah, it, it is, it is, truly is the best one in the world. It's just that it can't, it's not affordable for a lot of smaller businesses. And I think we're really fortunate, really fortunate we got Switch here in Midstream, but I think it is gonna actually work in our favor. So, yeah, I'm certainly happy to answer your questions.
Tim, I mean, the last one's on a ten-year agreement. What happens after your five?
That's, that's, I'm in your mind, as far as I was actually going, Jimmy mentioned it. The Motorola is, and most tech companies are really hesitant nowadays to offer more than five-year agreements because technology's changing very quickly. And, and they're very, they're very proud of being state-of-the-art and keeping everything up to date. They believe, and that's what we've been told, is that things are gonna move into the cloud. So you won't have server rooms full of a bunch of machines. The fellow back there in orange hat, his hair just stood on end, I'm pretty sure. I'm not sure if he trusts all of the cloud stuff, but it is where it is going. Now, what will happen, if that's the case, we won't necessarily have machines in our back room. There'll be, the maintenance will happen in the cloud. Now, don't ask me how, if I don't have any idea. It sounds great, and it sounds easier. And, and they, and they claim it's gonna be less expensive. So when we get to year, honestly, probably year three or four, I'm guessing, it's up to us to go and say. So, um, when we get to year, honestly, probably year three or four, I'm guessing, it's up to us to go and say, well, it better feel
after three years, four years, what's going to happen next.
Yeah, and I can tell you, they're right now testing some, uh, doing preliminary testing with some of the larger centers to see how it would work and try to find some of the bugs, and from what I gather, what I've heard, they're finding a lot of them. And, and it's something that they are not ready to, uh, to, to show already, yes. Uh, which, I mean, is a little bit comforting, truthfully. I mean, in five years, honestly, this thing, Vesta will be ready, I mean, Vesta's been around for a long time. This phone system's not going to go anywhere, if we have to wait until they're ready, that's not going to be a problem. Uh, I think they understand that, and are, I mean, the last conversation I had with the, with the, uh, the phone representatives was, just stand by, okay? We are not going to tell you, you have to do anything, Vesta's, that is, we're, we're going to have Vesta forever. It's just whether or not the Vesta product moves into the cloud and becomes Vesta Next, is what they call it. Uh, and so, uh, they tried to show off, showed off at the, at the summit this past April, and, um, they had some bugs in that. Just in their demonstrations, so.
I just worry more about the security of being in the cloud versus being outside.
And I think that's, that's what, uh.
Did I say that accurately?
Yes. Yeah, like I said, he gets shivers when I mention that.
Fortunately so. If there's not an IT guy nervous, they, they should be.
And I think that's, and I, I gotta believe in Motorola understanding that too, that that is the, that is the biggest concern from IT, is that you're going to take this thing, put it in the cloud, and how do we control it? How do we protect it? And, um, and it's got a lot of informed stuff on it. So, and they're talking about how much it saves in maintenance, because they don't need to come to a place or remote in. But if it doesn't work, or somebody steals your stuff, it doesn't even matter. So, I'll, I'll trust in, uh, Yoda, and it's, it's.
Well, the good news is we've got time to kind of see how all this plays out.
Yes, absolutely.
So, just a question, what would the timeline be for this transition? Because I know we have a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar debt service, uh, debt payment every year according to our lease schedule.
We wouldn't pay that before that.
Yeah, I just paid that for this past year.
For twenty-five, so are they going to rework our lease for the radio portion?
They will, they will, they will move that, uh, the phone portion, and, and so we will get an updated agreement that will have just the radio portion left, that may be nine thousand for the next three years. Uh, and then they will refund us what we paid, uh, pro-rated, for how long we, although, for however much left on it, which honestly will probably be, if we thought it, if we can get this, uh, the contract signed and start moving forward, then, um, we should have it installed and ready to go by, they're hoping by March. And it's at that point.
So five, six months or?
Yeah, six, eight months of refund, yeah. And, uh, and that's, I mean, that's just more money to go back in the fund.
What's the seventy-five hundred radios, is that an upgraded radios?
No, I'm sorry.
That's a mis, that's an existing part of that contract.
Yeah, it's just another part of the Motorola contract, I mean, we have, we have phone and radio together.
I was trying to reconcile it back to the line item, which was one fifty-five, so that you would see that's going to be ninety-nine, ninety-nine instead of one fifty-five. Because we're going to pay it upfront first the next year, so.
It saves us interest too.
It, it does, I mean, it costs us interest because it's not in the bank, but, true, so.
And, and it's, it's since, I mean, we, we paid nearly, I'm sure, but it, it doesn't make any sense to just not use it and do it. And I'll also assure you, the, the number one fund hasn't moved as far as the revenue being put into it, generated by it, for about twelve years, maybe.
I'd say longer.
And they might increase that fund too.
As they increase the fees. Uh, the fee essentially for now on fund is, e- every time we pay your phone bill every month, there's a nine one one fund. You have a nine one one fee on there, and that goes into the fund. And, uh, and that is, a lot of the directors, nine one one, uh, have had conversations with the state nine one one office about, reaching out to legislature and asking them to raise that rate for the sake. Uh, we've had our costs go up exponentially in the last ten or twelve years, probably a couple hundred percent, to be honest with you. And that rate has not moved a bit. So we get thirty-three thousand dollars a month deposited in our account, about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, uh, plus then an extra payment every year, usually about the same amount, uh, just, it's just like a thirteen payment, I think it's a dozen. Uh, so it's a little more than four hundred.
Didn't we figure out that cell phones have gone up, overall phones have gone up, usage-wise has gone up thirty to forty percent, I think.
Easily, yeah.
So forget about the fee change, they're collecting more money because there's more phones out there. That's been my year attempt, is wait a minute, we're still getting the same amount, but there's more phones out there that are generating that.
And I don't think you're the only ones questioning that, because state nine one one is trying to try to become a little more transparent about what they use their money. At least they've told us that they're going to be having reports that show a little more of that. Um, I've encouraged that too, and I think that type of thing is, it's pretty easy to show, actually. Uh, where you spend the money besides us. So, uh, the state legislature though is actually, uh, considering, uh, raising that rate, uh, next year. If they do, uh, it would, it would help every, uh, piece app. We, we are all looking at the same thing, our nine one one firm, we're trying to protect it, but it's really difficult to do that with the kind of expenses we have. All of our equipment, you know, starts with five figures, I mean, it just, it just does. And that is, uh, that's just a bunch of money. And, uh, the investment of the communities, they understand how important it is, and they really support it, they really do. It's not that, it's not about that dollars, it's about being able to, to pay your bills and not have to worry about whether you're going to be able to, uh, to afford and have all the rest of the stuff you have in building, so. We, we are in a good position now to do this, and, uh, and I appreciate Kendall's own, uh, is, is ability to, to do what he did here. I mean, literally, I said this to him, he sent me back to me. I mean, I just, I just kind of giggled, I'm watching this.
Can you make like your numbers?
Big time, uh, and I wanted to, I mean, I requested it, I mean, but then I went back and said, I got to show this how I can understand it. So, uh, so I did this thing. Uh, but if you guys have questions, I, I certainly will answer where I can, and even if it's not now, um, you'll reach out, let me know.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Brian, come on up.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks, Brian, Chief Administrator over at the Health Department. Uh, first one that we can do is transfer some funds from our eleven fifty-nine, uh, Health General, uh, and the eleven fifty-nine, two-two-one-zero-zero, which is our fuel line, uh, any amount of seven hundred and fifty, and transfer that over into the eleven fifty-nine, two-one-four-zero-eight, which is our clinic supplies. We're actually in the red right now, our clinic supplies.
They're going to cover you, though?
This, this should cover, uh, for that part of it that we're in the red, it should cover for the rest of the year. If not, I still have some in our eleven sixty-one for clinic supplies, so I'm pretty sure we'll be able to do it. I just need to get out of the red on this one.
Brian?
Second.
Taken by Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
And then the next one is for appropriation from our eleven sixty-eight, which is a local public apartment maintenance fund, which is also known as the legacy funds to the state. Um, it's our eleven sixty-one, three-one-one-one-zero-zero, uh, contract professionals, uh, thirty-five hundred, and then the three-one-one-one-zero into non-contract professionals of eight thousand. Thirty-five hundred, um, I got another bill from our attorney, uh, which is, I think, like eighteen or nineteen hundred. I think I've got one more that's going to come from, from the law firm. So that should cover everything for us till the end of the year. And then the eight thousand is, we have six refrigerator and freezers over at the Health Department for our vaccines. Um, we have three of them, one is from two thousand fifteen, one is two thousand sixteen, one is two thousand seventeen. So they're getting older, uh, technically from the normal lifespan of them, they're, they're in, they're getting to the end. Uh, however, we have a gentleman, uh, that comes in twice a year, does prevent a maintenance on all six of them. And the eight thousand on there is, it's for an extended, basically a service contract from him, where we would not have to pay for anything for the next two years. If we have like a compressor go out, or a fan go out, or anything like that, we pay nothing for him, for his service charge, his travel charge, uh, trip charge, all of that, everything is all covered, none of that, for the next two years. It's like thirty, thirty-nine ninety, I think it is, per year. So we can do the two years and have it locked in guaranteed for the next two years for that price.
And this is an additional, but you have funding in there, you just didn't have it appropriate?
In there, in fact, um, I did send a letter over to Jill, um, but I also have a copy of the letter from the state, um, that gives us the permission to go ahead and make that appropriation.
This is an additional?
Yes.
But you have enough in there?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right. Entertainer motion on that?
Motion approved.
Terry?
Second, Brian.
Second by Brian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay.
And then the last item is from the Health First, uh, eleven sixty-one, uh, fund. The three-six-two-zero-zero, uh, which is service contracts in the amount of twenty-nine hundred and fifteen. And we need to move that over to the eleven sixty-one, one-two-two-zero-zero for retirement. Um, Jill was kind enough to let me know, since Terry's been out for a while anyway, that we're a little short on the retirement part for this year, and that will cover, uh, for what we need.
This is perf, right?
That's, that's for the, uh, actions for the public health affairs.
Perf, perf though?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Entertainer motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Brian's, taken by Jamie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, Heather Malone, Chief Probation Officer. I'm here for a request for transfer of appropriation, and asking to move six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-two cents from overtime to the probation administrator line item. Um, our secretary Karen retired this year, and we hired a new probation administrator. Karen was able to stay on and train that new individual, so we are short for salary, and we plan on using overtime funds for that.
Entertainer motion on that?
Move motion.
John?
Second.
Taken by Terry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So I have, I have a question, Heather, before. So we've got a later one on state, Karen State Institutions, we've got an additional twenty-five thousand dollars coming in.
Which number?
Uh, this would be on item twenty, but it's on the top of the second page. They're, they're doing a bunch of transfers in order to fund the Karen in state. I thought we had some discussions at budget time where that, that number was coming down. I guess, is it, is it an additional because we cut the budget too much, or is it, are we just not?
I don't know, I didn't see this on the agenda.
Is that something you can, is that something you can look into that? Cause I just want to kind of understand, I thought the JDAI was going to help that, and that's why I was kind of surprised to see that on the, on the, on the agenda today. I, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
I don't have access to that fund, actually, but Sarah from the auditor's office, Jill, she sends me reports at the beginning of every year, and we track it that way along with an internal spreadsheet of what we spend. So I can take a look to see where we are at with that fund and let you know.
Yeah.
I was kind of curious, would it make sense to put that line in your county budget instead of the commissioners in future years? I'm not sure what the history of that is, why it, like.
It's been like that since I started here.
I'm just thinking that way you can monitor it without us needing to give you reports every month, and you'll have a better idea of how many juveniles have been, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the commissioners, because it's one of their line items, now, they would still have a portion of it, because they pay a portion for, um, individuals that are in the state mental hospital for clothing, some items that they have to pay for by statute. So unfortunately, they have one line item in that fund, and there are probably like twenty different areas that the money comes out. It goes to secure detention, it goes to electronic home detention, which is a detention alternative that we use. Um, you know, where you're looking at a difference between two hundred and fifty dollars a day and, you know, four hundred, or four dollars and ten cents a day. It would be great for us if we could separate those out into separate line items, just for tracking purposes, and then, you know, get the end of the.
Well, we could peel, I mean, if we were to separate it, it's.
Line with it, as long as the commissioners, we can work together to separate where, you know, they have their portion and, you know, we have ours.
That way you're not having to give them invoices to be paid or.
Right, because that gets complicated too, because I'm signing off for a portion of things, um, sometimes we need to get bills, you know, when there's a delay of us getting the bill, signing off on it, getting it down to the commissioners' office when nobody in session, and getting that signed and paid. A lot of times we're the ones that get the run of it, like where's the money, why isn't it just passed through? And so I think that would make things just cleaner.
It'll help you too on the ROI of the JDAI also, so you can understand that, so.
And speaking of JDAI, I just think she brought it up, we would like, um, somebody from council, it used to be Kitty, and then it was Pete who sat on our local steering committee. So if you, if somebody would want to volunteer, um, we meet maybe twice a year as a big group, and we have subcommittees. We try to do it over the lunch hour, so it would just be helpful, because then they can report back to you guys with, you know, the money aspect, which you were watching, so, and just be transparent where those grant funds are going to be.
So maybe reach out to Jamie?
Okay.
Thank you.
My next one is in March, and then I'll be back after Aaron, and I'll just.
Oh, do you want to do hers now, or?
Yes, I can take my turn.
Okay. Hi, Rob.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hi.
Rob Miller, Commissioner. Uh, just want to talk to you tonight about an additional we need for our solid waste disposal, which is our landfill budget. As you'll recall, the last few years, um, our budget was pretty significant, and we've, uh, reduced it with the thought in mind, if we ever had to do some additional remediation, we might have to come back for an additional. Unfortunately, this is one of those, uh, times where we're going to have to ask for an additional. You know, we're charged with maintaining, um, this closed landfill for, uh, the duration. We're under the, uh, IDIM, Indiana Department of Emergency Management, sets the rules of engagement. We have to monitor that site, we have monitoring wells on that site. They send their people in outman an office every year to check, make sure we're in compliance. So we, we do have some remediation we need to take care of. We're working with a company called SES, which is an environmental company that kind of gives us some guidance and kind of, uh, lobbies on our behalf with the state on what we need to do. I think the last, uh, this is new administration, and what we've seen over the years as we have a new administration or a new director in IDIM, the rules of engagement change, it's kind of a moving target, uh, you know. I dare you to try and figure out what the state's going to have you do at any given moment, so, um, they can actually tell you a pretty significant curve ball. But anyways, the, the issue at hand is, um, you know, this organic material in this dump site is decomposing. And as it decomposes, the level on the cap changes. And so what we're doing is we're trapping surface water. So, uh, one, one of the requirements of, of these monitoring wells is that, uh, you keep the water off the top of the cap, and you keep the methane and the VOCs from coming to the surface. So with this water being trapped on top of that landfill cap, because it's an uneven surface, um, we're, we're, we, you know, we get past the threshold, they come in and test it, say, hey, your, your methane, and you got water on top of your landfill, and you need to do a remediation. So, uh, last summer, um, the Drains Board had a large ditch, ditch project about a mile away. And so we got a bunch of free dirt, but we did have to haul, uh, fifteen thousand cubic yards of dirt in there, which is well over a thousand triax loads, to put a, a new six-inch cap on the landfill, change the contour, so we get that water off of there and stay in compliance.
You've got to redo the whole cap?
Yeah, we're going to just reshape the whole thing, because it's, it's all this up and down stuff, which traps the surface water. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's, they set the rules, and we're just trying to, uh, you know, some of their other solutions were, uh, And, uh, like I said, it's, it's, they set the rules and we're just trying to, uh, you know, some of their other solutions were, um, a whole lot more expensive than this, you know.
We got no choice, we have to take care of this.
So, um, unfortunately, we're gonna ask for an additional ninety thousand to cover, uh, the cost of, uh, we have, uh, repairs and monitoring wells that were, uh, not working properly. And to haul the dirt in for the, for the-
Is this ninety thousand a hard estimate, or?
Yeah, that, that's gonna give us, I mean, that's gonna get us through the end of the year for, for the dirt. Now, we have it, we have it.
You got another hundred for next year, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, SES is working, like I said, they're our environmental consultant. They're working with the state on how they want this cap shaped, you know, the, the, the grade, what it has to look like. Uh, we just got, we just finished up the ditch project, so we're probably not gonna be able to reshape the cap this, 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 because of the weather's gonna, like, knock us out of blocks, you know, so. But this will take care of, uh, the cost today.
Are, are the monitoring wells testing okay?
Yeah, they're okay right now, they're, they're up and running. Uh, I'm trying to think how often they do the testing, I think it's every three months, something like that, so.
So the, the fact that that's got a dip in, it's not affecting our wells, or the discharge?
It, it, I mean, it is, that's why we're doing this. I mean, that's, that's, that's the whole premise behind bringing the dirt in, because we've been in violation of it, and we need to come up with a remedy. One of the other remedies is, uh, build a, uh, tank on-site, above grounds heated, and pump it out of the landfill into the tank. Haul it to a wastewater treatment plant. So this is certainly a cheaper option versus what, uh, some of the stuff that they've proposed, you know, in the past, so. Like I said, the, the biggest problem is, is it, it's kind of a moving target sometimes what they want you to do, so. We've gotten to agree to this, this remedy or this remediation, and so we're gonna go forward and go with that for, for now, so.
Motion approved, this ninety thousand.
Motion by Terry?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, uh, next item, um, I need a transfer to retirement and social security from, uh, unemployment, our wellness program, EAP, ACA. Dream point screening, drug screens, random E, immunization, HR advertising, HR, uh, training and dues. Uh, Stephanie can probably speak to why we need the additional for the retirement social security, but, uh-
This is various, I have payroll, um, so, um, there's an additional in the works for next month to, um, complete retirement for the end of the year, so. Just to clear everything out that I could, to make that up.
So do we, um, these are just retirement out of county general wages, correct? Okay. Um, cause I noticed the health department had the same thing, is there an air there for kind of the same? So we probably wanna look at the calculations on the, I don't know if on the wage and salary ordinance we can do.
Their hourly is gonna be, you know, without scheduling for these departments, when they work overtime or, you know, things like that, that's not a factor for, and that factors towards their fourteen point two percent.
Fifty, fifty-one grand, though, that's a lot. Fifty-one divided by a point. That's three hundred and fifty thousand, we have that much in overtime?
I don't really, I don't see the reports for the payroll.
That's a lot of overtime.
I think it was partially, um, when, uh, when new budget, which we've talked about how to do this better in the future. Um, but when even other funds, when departments are budgeting, they're budgeting their current rate of pay. They put in for an incentive, but they're not thinking, even though we give them those percentages, they're not thinking to calculate those percentages on the possible incentive as well. And so, that's part of it.
There's probably a way, there's probably a way in the-
I think I-
Budget report that we could pull and say, okay, based on these wages, take that times fourteen point two and take this times seven, six, five, or whatever.
I told Stephanie I did pull, uh, a report that I think will help for next year. Um, but we also have, it's very hard when you have multiple positions being paid out of multiple funds. Some funds cover the retirement and social security, some don't. So trying to track those in advance of funding and then we end up moving things around. It's just, it's a busy time anyway, but I feel like I have a report pinned down now that we can get a better idea of.
Okay.
And I told her I-
And that your changes don't help either, we pay increases-
Sure.
Right, right.
Positions and those kind of things.
Right. And so I think that we can-
Yeah.
Be more proactive, we'll work together.
Okay. Well, let me know if you need some help on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. With that being said, oh, we got, oh, we gotta vote on that, oh, we can vote on the other one too.
So this is a, a transfer also, um, some very sole due for travel expense, population, we don't have reimbursement, generally voting, liability, postage, and training education. So, uh, this is to cover a shortfall in care in state. Um, going into twenty twenty-five, um, we didn't really know what our legal was gonna be. We felt like we had some room in Karen State, uh, and it's, it's kind of a fluid, uh, account too. So we moved some money out of legal to cover legal, and so now we're short the twenty-five thousand in Karen State. But anyways, um, in twenty twenty-six, I, I think we looked at that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we, we did take out fifty thousand in Karen State that we had, but didn't, right?
Yeah, we did, that's why I was like, that's why I was like, oh, did we, did we give it too big of a haircut?
But the reason it was that shortfall was because we couldn't predict what our legal was gonna be for, um, twenty twenty-five, going into twenty twenty-five. That was, so now for twenty twenty-six, when I was, you know, our legal, you know, you gotta take an average, a monthly average, and say, this is kind of where we're gonna land. And we did reduce what we had originally thought on our budget for twenty twenty-six legal, just because, uh, go like that, it's prudent, but anyways.
Does that make sense, what I was talking about earlier with Heather, to try to split that out?
Yeah, I think that would be funny.
That she could probably budget better than, you guys are probably throwing the dart at the board sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, it, like I said, it, it's pretty fluid, and it's, if you pay for somebody to go outside the county and be, uh, housed, I mean, you're paying a tremendous amount. If that's an adolescent or any, anybody else, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pot of cash. And the fact that we've got the ability to keep them here for four bucks a day makes, makes that a whole, that number probably stay a lot lower.
Yeah.
If we can do that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on those two transfers.
Motion to approve, item twenty, that's in place.
Okay, Brian? Second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bridgette.
Bridgette?
Um, I am here to request a transfer of funds, um, from MBH Materials of thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, moving that into thirty-five thousand dollars into unleaded fuel and two thousand dollars into tires.
So, short on the fuel?
Yeah, we are, we're short. Um, we came down to additional, but our fuel usage is up this year compared to last year, so, um, we have it up, it's not even reimbursed into the fund, we just don't have it up.
Oh, okay.
It's all the snow we got.
Say that again.
It's all the snow we got. I'm teasing.
I blame people that put the Christmas decorations up.
Agreed.
All right.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie?
John, second.
Oh, John, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion by Jamie, second by-
Second by John.
Thank you.
Back for Aaron. I called her on Twitter just to stay home, I'd do this for her.
There you go.
I saw she was on, she was last. So, she is asking for a transfer of appropriation from her drug court grant on ninety-six oh five. She's asking to move one thousand twenty dollars from travel and training to subscription and dues. And she's asking to move six hundred on incentives to operating supplies.
Keith?
Second.
Second by John. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then she asked me to share this with you, we only have one for all of you, she already had a bunch of cuts. So you don't want your invitation. Our drug court graduation is December third at four o'clock in Superior Court. We are anticipating having three graduates, so you all are invited.
December third?
You're welcome.
December third at four o'clock?
December third, four o'clock in Judging East Court.
Okay. All right, so, you were gonna handle this one, right, Jill?
Uh, yes, so Leslie was not able to appear, but I told her that I could, uh, show this information with you. Basically, I don't know if you recall, the last couple meetings, they had to do some strategic, um, adjustments to their funding for community corrections. And how, um, payroll would be paid, um, to deplete existing funding. Um, so we did make those changes to the salary ordinance, but, um, at that time, they had not shared with me that that would affect the overtime and holiday pay as well for those positions. So, um, this change would just be to reflect that ordinance to say that we could use project income, eleven twenty-two. Um, after the other funding is depleted in order to pay for overtime and holiday pay wages.
Okay, so, kind of the same thing as the other, just different funds that you're working with?
Yeah, just different lines in the budget and-
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to open the salary ordinance.
Motion.
Jamie? Second by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, I entertain a motion to amend the ordinance for community corrections as worded on the, uh, agenda.
Motion to amend the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Brian, second by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Motion to close the salary ordinance, Jamie?
Second.
Second by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, council schedule here. Think everybody had a chance to look at it. Pretty comparable to this year, since the day off.
Very similar to this year. You'll notice that the dates don't always fall on, say, the third or the fourth of the month. We try to keep them pretty evenly distributed, and some meetings are earlier in the month, so we have to kind of adjust, um.
It, I will say this, it is nice to have it earlier in the month, especially in November, December with the holidays, getting it-
It's kind of busy those times.
Getting it away from those times.
It helps my office in December, just cause there's so much to do at the end of the month, end of the year.
So, entertain a motion to-
Motion.
Prove. Terry, second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Schedule was set, um. New business, what, what do we have on new business? You were gonna remind me.
Right, so, um, today, the redevelopment commission, uh, met and they approved the TIF spending plan for twenty twenty-six. This is something that Baker Tilly helps analyze and project the spending based on the TIF areas that we have and the revenues that are projected to come in. Uh, the commissioners approved that, I have to upload it to Gateway, uh, for transparency portal. Um, but I am required to share this with you as well, you don't have to vote on it, but just acknowledge that I did send out the email today and that it did, um, go out to everybody, it was shared.
Let's do a consensus here. Brian?
Yep.
John? Just say, you, you received it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, for me. Yes, Jamie? Okay.
And then the other item that I had, uh, this is seventeen eighty-two, uh, budget information that was sent out. This is from the DLGF, uh, after our budgets were submitted, they rework everything, make sure everything is fully funded. The only plan, uh, that I have to make a change would just be to restate that estimate of, um, SEVIT and FIT to go into the general fund for twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, so the past-
And the remaining of twenty twenty-five as well.
Oh, okay, so the, yeah, so the SEVIT and the FIT used to get spread out amongst all the general, or, all the county levying funds.
Yes.
So it had been reassessment, general, all four of those. We're just gonna keep it simple, it's all gonna go into general, it's not that much money. Uh, it's actually more of a pain in the butt probably to distribute it.
Very little went to those other funds.
Yeah, it was more administrative work than anything, so.
They changed the process.
So that's gonna be the only change from what you guys saw in the, in the other one, so otherwise it looked good to me. So, okay, thank you, Jill.
Yep.
All right, move to committee reports, community corrections, looks like Terry is-
Yeah, real, real quickly, they've been working hard, um, as you have heard, community corrections money was, um, depleted, or we weren't getting our grants from the state. So they're, they're working hard to keep all their programs going. This is just a rundown of their funds. Uh, I would tell you right now, there's a hundred individuals in the pre-trial, uh, services, uh, a hundred and seventy-five on electronic monitoring. This was as, as of this date two weeks ago, uh, approximately two weeks ago. Uh, seventeen on, uh, this, uh, alcohol monitoring program they have, I don't, I forget what the other, fourteen on work release, it was sixteen. They graduated one, they, they failed one. And the, the great news on this is, um, Judge Newton and Leslie have been working really hard to pull Wells County and Wabash County into the fold. In other words, they're gonna use our, um, work release program. Uh, they, they, they have to meet their criteria. If somebody fails the system, of course, the sheriff from that county's gonna come and pick them up. Um, they have already one from Wells County that's in the system, they have two in the, possibly in the works if they, they pass the, 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 the things that they need to do. And there, there's more possibilities for sure, to where we could, uh, if you remember the capacity of the work release, it's thirty-two.
Thirty-two, I was just gonna ask you that.
Tremendously helped, they've increased their fees, which they talked about in this meeting as well, and passed that. The board passed, and they also changed their leadership, where the chair of this, uh, uh, the past president is gonna be, uh, Judge Newton now, and then the chair is now gonna be Ryan Wall. Um, I've talked to him extensively, understanding myself more and more of how this is, all this, these monies come together, these revenues come together to run these programs. Uh, the vice is Jeremy Nixon, the secretary is Amy Richardson. Um, they're, they're really working hard at it, guys, to, to, to make sure these programs work. Um, the, uh, Matt Flieger was in the commissioners meeting today, this morning, and, you know, basically saying how well Jamie, uh, over at the jail for the inmate advocate is working. All these programs together have been, um, working together to reduce the numbers in the jail, uh, reduce recidivism, and, and really kind of change some lives. And, and so you'll see the culmination of the drug court program that you just seen on that graduation, which I tried to attend. Um, we're making a difference with these, with these programs, and so, um, I'm really proud of that for Huntington County. It's, it's not done in every county, as I talked to, um, councils across the state. So, that's the report there for community corrections.
Okay, thank you. Solid waste, any other?
Uh, discussed earlier, uh, the things maybe have a, have a recycle day. Um, and you know, the problem with having a recycle day is it costs between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand dollars to do that, so. Given the fact that we've got a consistent five days a week, do we really need that? So, like I said, that was just the top.
Okay.
Recycle day every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, recycle day and every day.
Anything on three A, John?
Uh, meetings, uh, this week.
This week?
Thursday.
Okay. Anything on job class? Should be pretty quiet right now, all right? Uh, Shane's not here for LACE, anything on line city, Terry?
Um, next meeting's December fifth, we might even get a meeting, a, a new economic development person, we'll see.
We'll see. Uh, EMA, anything, Keith?
Yeah, I had a meeting, uh, last week. They, uh, had nomination office for twenty twenty-six. Uh, the grants that have not gone out, uh, we got one from the courthouse security locks, about a hundred and four thousand dollars. Uh, if you haven't got it yet, but, uh, let's see, a lot of salary admitted submission, there are about forty-two thousand will be approved. Uh, we had a grant submitted to LA PC, uh, and it's not been approved yet. NITCO has granted this, uh, five thousand dollars for training on Luther batteries. House enrollment designed to increase transparency. Rules of regulation- the rules and regulations have been updated, but we didn't vote to approve this last, uh, uh, week. The old business, uh, the old sirena out of Vipas, uh, sold to Liberty Center for fifty bucks.
Big money.
Uh, they've had a lot of responses, uh, seven thirty-one, they had a, uh, overturned a vehicle leaking, uh, fuel. Uh, on eight-one, they had, uh, in Marco, a structured fire. Eight-eleven, they had a, uh, semi, uh, fire hazmat. On eight-twenty-seven, they had a, uh, training in, uh, Argos, uh, for, uh, transferred from car training. Also, the same, the next day, they had an operation crazy train with a full scale operation that's, had a train that was going to desert. Eight-thirty, they went out the, uh, Huntington Airport, uh, for the, uh, tons of truck with, with, has to deal with the park department. And nine-thirty, uh, they were in North Manchester on a mutual aid thing for a missing child.
Hmm.
Uh, also on ten-six, uh, Appleby, on Appleby Court, they had a, uh, structured fire. Ten-seven, on US twenty-four in Stolz, they had a ten-fifty PI for hazmat. Also on ten-twenty, Highway twenty-four, they had a ten-fifty semi for hazmat. Uh, that's about it.
Okay.
They've been pretty busy.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Yeah, uh, also, uh, Thomas out there at Fuller.
Mm-hmm.
Has been getting a lot of training, a lot of training, so he's working his way.
Good.
Luckily, I have him.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good deal. Okay, where are we at? Plan Commission?
Uh, nominated in November.
Okay, nothing on seated advisor, probably. Uh, HQ, uh, they're down to a couple finalists, uh, got to meet those today, we'll see. Uh, hopefully in the next few days, we'll know who our new director is. Uh, ABC, Keith, I saw the email went out, nominations?
Yes, they got, uh, uh, scheduled a luncheon on the twentieth of, uh, December, ten of it, so.
December twentieth, okay.
December twentieth.
Hopefully notified by our meeting, probably, you'll know for sure by our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anything on tax abatements, John?
Nope.
Okay, warm, December the tenth is our next, December tenth, okay. Anything on the health insurance?
Yes, I have a meeting on the twentieth.
Twentieth, same day, huh?
No, 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 this month.
Oh, this month, November twentieth, okay. Hopefully you get some, insurance is expensive. Uh, EMS, anything?
Uh, meeting last, oh, whatever day it was, the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, just a couple of things that they covered was overdoses are still on the decline, which is good.
That's good.
Um, they had two new ambulances coming into service or in service with re, and with the, they're doing a remount, so they're not buying a whole truck, they're doing a, a remount, leaving that two times with their, basically the bodies of their, of their ambulances, which is good. Um, still Huntington County's still leading the way on average response times, so I thought that was kind of neat with the whole Parkview system, um, and a lot of that helps that we have that fourth truck that they added this year, so.
That's good.
That's kind of the, the whole gist of it there.
Okay. Uh, combined dispatch, that, uh, meet tomorrow, we did, we were supposed to meet last two, yeah, last week, but that was Veterans Day, so we didn't meet. So we meet tomorrow, we're gonna talk a lot about the, the new software and things. Uh, internal controls, anything, Jill?
Every day, all day.
Every day, all day. Redevelopment, anything going on, Terry?
We had a meeting today, it was a, a kind of a required meeting, uh, presenting our, our annual spending plan for twenty twenty-six. So we made that.
Yeah, we got the email on, yep. Okay, anything out in Markle, Brian?
Nothing's happening in Markle.
Okay. I'll entertain a.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Jamie?
Second.
Taken by Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All righty.